So, welcome to this afternoon's study session. I believe all the board members will be here but Sherri, she might be a little bit late. Sorry, we'll excuse her. Amy is in the building. So, the first part of this, we'll start with a little discussion on capacity. Dr. Susana Reyes.
Thank you.
Let you take it away.
All right. Good afternoon, President Christensen, members of the board. Superintendent Whitney, this evening's study session will cover school building capacity You have these handouts in front of you. This is just for your reference. Class size reduction, capacity calculations for other districts. And then, you also have a large doc, two, three large documents. There's a smaller document on the three large. It's this one right here. And it's the OSPI version of calculating capacity. So, we won't be speaking to it. I just wanted you to have it for your reference, okay? All right. So, let me get this organized here. So, first, I'm going to review different ways that we calculate building capacity. The calculations are based on various factors which include current programs and use of building, contract language, scheduling factors, and class size reduction. Yeah, you can speak to us.
Speak to you.
Okay.
And then, after Dr. Reyes has done talking about the capacity calculations, I'd like us to get into a conversation with regards to the capital facilities plan because the capacity calculation that the district selects is directly related to a lot of the planning that we do, including our standard of service that we're going to establish in our capital facilities plan. And so, this will, when we get into the capital facilities plan side of the discussion, it will be a discussion of just a review of some of the components of the capital facilities plan and enrollment calculations in anticipation of a longer study session at the end of April. We do have a guest with us this evening. Denise Stiffarm is an attorney with Pacifica Law Group. She's been providing us technical expertise as we've been navigating how to reconfigure our mitigation fee process with the county. And she's also been providing us with technical expertise in this renewal of our capital facilities plan. So, she'll be here to speak to some of the technical aspects of that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so, capacity calculations. So, capacity calculations are used for planning future facilities. And our intention today is to share the various ways that we can calculate capacity and then have you maybe engage in conversation, discussion around which of the calculations make most sense. And the district will have a recommendation or two as to which ones we might want to select for our purposes, okay? So, first of all, glossary of terms. You'll see all of these terms listed in the slides that are upcoming. And this slide provides you with a description of each of those terms. Current utilization refers to how a school is currently used and includes combination of grade levels, special programs, specialists, et cetera. Contract capacity refers to collective bargaining agreement around class size limits. Scheduling factor is a factor that we use to, that allows teachers to plan in their classrooms. And for the elementary, it's the average daily contractual planning time minutes. It's a percentage of the planning time minutes for elementary. And at the middle and high school level, it's the average planning time, takes into account the average planning time within the current schedule. Class size average is, when you see that in the slides, we use that to calculate average class size across grade levels for general education classrooms. And class size reduction refers to K3 and 412 class size reduction per initiative 1351. And you have a handout that lists the numbers related to class size reduction, okay? So, we'll start with the slides that provide you with information regarding the calculations. And as we go through each one, you can refer to the larger spreadsheet for the related detail. And so, you have a spreadsheet for three of the schools that we'll be sharing these calculations for. Angelo Elementary, Ochoa Middle School, and Chiawana High School. So, for the purpose of today, purpose of today's discussion, we'll be using those figures for those schools. So, this first slide for Angelo Elementary shows the building capacity. You'll see there at 735 and the portable capacity at 264. The calculation factors include current utilization, the contract language, and an 88% scheduling factor. This slide has the little icon there that says option A. And you'll find option A is also labeled on the column on the larger spreadsheet. And that, again, provides you that additional detail. This is option B and considers the calculation factors that include current utilization and also considers the class size averaged across general ed classrooms and then the 88% scheduling factor. So, you'll see the impact on capacity figures there on the table. Option C for Angelo Elementary shows capacity calculated using the class size reduction numbers and the 88% scheduling factor. And again, option C is labeled accordingly on the large spreadsheet. Option D shows capacity calculated using class size reduction numbers, averaging the class size for general ed classrooms using class size reduction, and then the 88% scheduling Option E for Angelo Elementary is basically the same as option D, except that for grades four through six, we use contract language and not the K, and not the class size reduction figures. And again, an 88% scheduling factor. For Ochoa Middle School, option, oh, I'm sorry.
Before you go. Sorry, you might have said it at the start. Can you explain the scheduling factor again?
Yes.
We don't have that handout with the glossary, do we?
No. Oh, sorry, I can't see. I should be able to just go back, yeah. Okay, so, the scheduling factor, it's a factor that allows, that we use, which allows teachers to plan in their classrooms. So, for the elementary level, 88% of the day, classrooms are available for student use. 12% of the day is used, the classrooms are used by the teacher for planning. And it's based on their daily contractual time according, you know, as stated in the collective bargaining agreement. Middle and high school, it's also the average planning time within the current schedule, so.
So, using like option C as an example, why would we need to apply a scheduling factor at the elementary school? Because even if they weren't planning in their rooms, we'd still have the same number of students. So, for example, for Kinder One, we're saying that the capacity is 17 based on lower class size reduction. So, it's 17, isn't it 17 students? No matter what, why would we multiply it by 88%? Even if we didn't have planning, you couldn't fit more students in there.
It has to do with the utilization of the school during the course of the day. So, it would, technically, it would impact the capacity because there would be a certain portion of the day in each of the classrooms that we wouldn't be able to have students.
Okay, I see what you're saying. We'll move forward and I'll keep.
We can go through and then. You know, Scott, this might help. Like PE, special education, tech, whatever, art, all of these things, there's certain class sizes for them, but they're taking over the kids from, from the classrooms. Does that make sense? So, like, a teacher will still be in their classroom where there's 25, her 25 children are in art areas. A teacher will still be in the tech or, in their classroom while somebody had their 25 kids in tech. So, to, so there's not, so to work out that, that difference in kids at any moment, you have to do an 88% scheduling factor.
So, wouldn't it be easier to just say that, okay, so look at the first three lines, like 300, sorry, 170, 85, and 300. Those are general education, general population numbers, and they add up to 555. And then, you have sped on top of that, so it'd be 567, right? And the rest of those are all the specials? So, why wouldn't we just add the first three plus the sped and call it 567 in that case instead of multiplying it by some kind of factor that we don't really understand?
Then you don't account for the other rooms.
But the other rooms can't take new additional students beyond lines one through three plus the sped. The rooms that, that's the utilization there. It's, I'd say the utilization would be the sum of all those in the denominator and the sum of the four lines I just said in the numerator. And it's not going to be 88%, but it's real close. It'd be like, it's going to be like 90%.
So, another way we could look at it, and one of the other districts does this, is they take whatever the program involves, whether it's special education, specialist, or whatever, they calculate this amount of square footage that those programs would use, and they subtract that square footage from the overall square footage. And then, they go in and divide the remaining square footage by the number of students based on whatever calculation factors that they use, such as class size limits and/or also a utilization factor for, to account for planning time.
But do you see what I'm saying? So, if you, if you add the first three lines and the sped, you get 560, what did we just say, 567? Is it?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And then, and so that's the numerator. And then, the denominator is 567 plus music, PE sped, or music, PE, tech, and art. You see what I'm saying here?
Yeah.
And the number's going to come out at like 90, but it's going to be slightly different at each school.
Right.
And that shows that that scheduling factor is slightly different based on your layout. But it's always probably going to be around 90%, but.
Which is why.
It's a more straightforward calculation to me that you can defend.
Yeah, I can see that. I think maybe the flip side would be if you don't count those other classrooms, you could start throwing other things into those classrooms and not, not actually counting that because you could change those classrooms, right? And become, we could make a music room, a K1 classroom, and then, you know, and put music with something else and combine those. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, I think it just recognizes that there are more, more classes, classrooms in the building. And so, it tries to figure that in, recognizing that a portion of the day, when your students are in the PE classroom, then you have your planning time. But I see what you're saying, and I'm, I agree. I like simple things that are just easy to explain and defend, and it kind of convolutes it a little bit.
This is your, this is your home room, those four lines that I just talked about. And then, the others are, just like a cafeteria or something else, or support rooms that we need, but you can't put full-time students in there.
I guess if you wanted to make it a lower capacity, though, you could then say, well, we need two music rooms, we need a music and orchestra room, we need, you know, additional. And then, you could not count those so that your capacity would less in just your regular classrooms.
Yeah, that's all.
I would hope that wouldn't happen. But you know what I mean? That's what you're saying, if we just don't count all those extra classrooms.
Yeah, that's essentially what it comes down to, is you don't, if you're just counting, assuming every student goes to either a general ed or a special ed classroom, then those are the only ones you would count. But if you're counting every, every classroom in the building, then every teacher would presumably have some planning time. And that, we would expect, generally, at least at the elementary level, they're planning in their classroom. That classroom's not used for something else. And I think that was the reason that this calculation was done this way.
And this is typically done across all other districts. And I really feel like if you take out that 88% scheduling factor, then we're still going to have a convoluted thing to try to explain while there's four or five other classrooms in the building that aren't being utilized, where they really are being utilized, and there's an 88% scheduling factor. To me, that's more clear than, than getting rid of all those classrooms and saying that, that there's not an 88% scheduling factor. This is more accurate.
So, the total capacity there is, without the 88%, is 667?
Um, I.
Well, whatever the number, we would expect that we use every classroom 100% all day long.
Yes, 667.
I'm just saying it should be, in my mind, if it's easier, you know, I'm sorry for persevering on this, but 557 or 5, 567 over 667 is, would be our scheduling slash utilization factor, and it'd be right around 88% also. It'd just be more clear that without this scheduling, you have 667. With the scheduling, utilization, you have 567. Sorry, you can move forward.
That's okay.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I think the challenge is, so, so to me, this, this, this capacity thing is very frustrating because our numbers are all over the board. And I would like to find one number for every building that works, that makes sense, that we can explain to everybody. And apparently, we haven't done that yet because we're.
There's a possibility of another number.
We're confused among 5-0s here, so. This is one way. I would, I would expect this would be pretty clear. We've got every, every building or every classroom in the building accounted for, the specials, the general eds. And we've given them a number, and we're just saying that we would expect these to be utilized 88% of the time. Because that other 12%, the teacher is in, is doing planning presumably in that classroom. Now, I think what you're saying, Scott, and Erin, is that we just count general ed or the special ed classroom, not the, not the music, PE, technology, and art, because we would just assume that for the period that their, that their teacher is planning, they are in one of those other classrooms, and we have the capacity in those other classrooms to, to handle all of that. And then, we simply count those classrooms.
Maybe this is, I agree with you, this is frustrating. I remember being frustrated in the last couple of years, we had this discussion, maybe this is something with OSPI, they need to just establish a standard that you just, I mean, there's not that much difference between our elementary school and every other elementary school in the state. You have a certain number of students, certain number of size of the building, whether portables are counted and what portion they're counted. It should just be a standard so we can actually compare apples to apples when we look at district to district to district, which it seems like they're trying to do with this new reporting, you know, model that they're going to have, that's going to give report cards on every school. So, if, in this type of thing, it should also be just a standardized thing. There's no reason for each district to come up with all these random numbers that are different than other districts across the state.
That, that would be nice, but until we get there, I think we need to have some standard that we're applying. And I, and I would expect or hope that we can come out of that, come out of this with something that makes sense. So, whether we, you know.
The only piece I might add, just, so right now, we're talking about an elementary school where it's pretty clear that music, art, technology, PE are the quote-unquote specialists. That gets a little more convoluted or less clear at the high school and middle school level where there are elective classes that are offered as kind of during the related arts or enhancement blocks, but are in a gen ed classroom. So, it gets a little bit more convoluted as you move into the middle school, high school in terms of pulling out the special classrooms to mirror that same kind of approach at the middle school and high school. So, it might be a little, it might muddy the water a bit in terms of where you can apply the concept of the scheduling factor across the elementary, middle school, high school that works across the system where those special, pulling out the specialized classrooms is clear at the elementary, but maybe not as clear at the middle school and high school levels. Because it could be a gen ed classroom in which a specialized class is offered. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And we, maybe we can wait, what's really going to make this frustrating is the portable, so let's get to that, and then we can start having this big discussion. Because what we've talked about so far is very minimal.
And you, and you see the portable capacities there, and we know that there are portables and, but we still have them, and so we do use them, and so that calculation is there as well.
We just need to make that portable block about 10% of the size that it is, so nobody sees it, and then we just see what our true building capacity is. I mean, portables should be temporary. This should be, and that number can change. Add another portable and, and that number changes. So, really, the, to me, the one we should be focusing on is this building capacity.
Okay.
The portable discussion should be about five minutes and done.
So, I believe we, we did go through option E. So, Ochoa Middle School. Option A for Ochoa Middle School. Again, the calculation factors include the current utilization, the contract language, language around class size limits, and a 76% scheduling factor. Option B for Ochoa Middle School shows capacity when the calculation is based on current utilization, when the class size is averaged across general ed classrooms, and using a 76% scheduling Option C, capacity calculated using class size reduction and a 76% scheduling factor. And again, you have those, the class size numbers there in front of you. Ochoa is, I believe, a high poverty school, so you'll see that the class size number there reflects what is on that list in your handout. Option D shows class size reduction as a factor, as well as class size averaged using the class size reduction to calculate it and a 76% scheduling factor. Option A for Chiawana High School, again, current utilization, using contract language, as well as a 75% scheduling factor. And again, you have the details related to, to these slides there in the large spreadsheet Option B for Chiawana High School shows the capacity when the calculation is based on, again, current utilization, when class size is averaged, using contract language to calculate, and then a 75% scheduling factor. Option D takes into account class size reduction and 75% scheduling factor. Or option C, excuse me. Option D, capacity is calculated using class size reduction numbers, averaging the class size for, using the class size reduction figure, and then a 75% scheduling factor. And that, I believe, is the last option for Chiawana, and we can discuss further.
Can you refresh us on what class size reduction means outside? I mean, we hear about K3 class size reduction a lot, so I get that. But what is, where's it stated that high schools should be reduced to 23 students from 30?
Okay, so, back in 2014, initiative 1351, I believe is what it was that was passed. You have this handout in front of you that provides you with the figures related to both non-poverty schools and high-poverty schools, and that is what the legislature agreed upon and, and passed. K3 class size reduction figures, numbers were, are required, and they're currently expected to be implemented and so forth. Grades four through 12 have been postponed, and that, they were postponed, I believe, last year for about four years, so probably not until about 2021 or so, when we might hear more about when they would be required.
So, are we discussing, or are we, you have some recommendations?
Yes.
What do we do now?
The, the, typically, the class size reduction calculation is what we have used to inform the capital facilities plan, so we would recommend that we consider that strongly. Option B uses current programming, the way we're using buildings, and also averages the class size, so that could be another one. But I think it's, for, for purposes of long-range planning, especially with K3 class size reduction already in place, it would be the recommendation that we consider at least the K3 class size reduction option for, for purposes of calculating capacity in that regard.
So, Susana, just for clarity, that would be either option D or option E. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Are we going to discuss now?
Yes.
Okay.
Discuss away.
So, this, just so everyone's aware, there, we have a handout that has examples from other districts like Washington, Bethel, Kennewick, Puyallup, and Auburn, so five, five other school districts. I'm looking at Puyallup. So, in there, it says portables are not counted in the capacity calculation, and that's what I think we should do in our district. So, the other four don't, it doesn't comment. I'm not sure, there's no comment whether or not they count those or not. But with all of, with all that's happened in the last year or two, I believe portable should not be counted as your capacity, and there's many reasons for this, I'm sure, which they use to defend their position that they should not be counting portables as your capacity. So, then, the primary reason is that your building, which houses your gym and cafeteria and other gathering spaces, that doesn't enlarge when you add a portable. And like Mr. Christensen said, portable should be considered temporary. They don't add to the size of your building where your students have to gather for those things I just described. And so, it makes no sense to me and is not defensible to say, well, the capacity of Livingston is 700 because they have 15 porta, I'm throwing these out, I don't know the exact numbers, because they have 15 portables when really their school, the building where they meet for, in the cafeteria for lunch, when they go to gym, where they have music classes, the capacity of the actual building with those common spaces is more like 400 or 500. So, to me, it's just indefensible, and there's no way to, to fudge it to say, well, the capacity of Livingston is 700 based on the fact that they have X number of portables. The other issue that's been on everyone's mind recently that we just had a panel discussion on is safety and security of our buildings. And so, and it was brought up at, at that discussion by some community members that, and we've received other communications via email and other means backing up this idea as well, that having all of these portables is not very safe and secure. So, for those two reasons, and there are many more, but I'll just stop there. To me, that clearly, and this is what Puyallup does, the other ones may do it as well, we, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. To me, it's clear that portable should not be counted as part of the capacity of your building. I'd love to hear what the other board members think about that.
I agree.
I, we have to list capacity somehow or we would just, it would just look like, okay, we have all of these schools and some of the kids are having class on the roof. I mean, somewhere we have to show where we're housing kids. So that might be a side note if we wanna make it less part of the whole thing. You know, this is the capacity, the building currently we are holding kids in, but at, at some point, we have to say, okay, even though the capacity of this building is five hundred and fifty kids and we have eight hundred in there, you know, we don't have forty kids per classroom. So I don't know how we do that, but, you know, but I do agree that we need to focus more on the brick and mortar capacity and less on the portable and so I'm not sure how to do that.
Mr. Lerman, do you have a comment on that?
I would agree with what several of you said about not counting portables at any level as part of the capacity. And I guess at the elementary school level, I like the option C with the, with the class size reduction and scheduling factor. At the secondary level, I like the contract capacity with scheduling factor. So I guess they don't have options on them.
Oh, did I not put options on those?
Before option A, the options to the far left.
The far left.
Is what I like at the secondary level. And then I'd also, I guess, request, without doing a lot of research, but looking at this package you have here for other school districts, it looks like eighty-three-ish percent is kind of a common number at secondary levels for scheduling. So looking at how do we, as a district, go from seventy-five and seventy-six percent at our middle school and high school to increase our capacity based on more efficient scheduling so that we can get up closer to where Lake Washington and Puyallup and some of these examples that you have in this package are at around eighty-three percent.
I think another thing we, last, in the last year and a half, Joe Clark has come and walked the buildings, gave us a long report of every single building and, and he did not count portables, if I remember, as part of the numbers, the estimates on his capacity or however, I don't think he used capacity, what word he used, but in their evaluation of all of our buildings, they did not count portables in the numbers they gave us.
So I think, I mean, certainly we need to acknowledge that we have portables and we need to identify whatever capacity they bring, but that needs to be, to me, that needs to be distinguished as temporary capacity, not, not, not part of our building capacity. And, and I, we, we become used to that because that's just a way of life for us here in Pasco, but I would definitely like to see, I personally would like to see a permanent brick and mortar capacity. And then we can add portables and acknowledge that they're there and that this much of our building is in portables, but, but I think we definitely need to distinguish that. One of the other things that, that, I'm looking through some of these, I noticed that they change, the capacity changes year to year and that, that is, that's a frustration to me, is the building capacity doesn't change. Now, the way we use that building and the number of students in that building might change year to year, but unless we go in and physically make a change to that building, the capacity doesn't change. And, and I, I would like to see us, well, I guess there's a couple of things that could make that capacity change. So when we do a capacity calculation, we have to assign a class size. So whether it's based on the, the reduced class size from legislation or the contract language, or if we pick some other average number, that number needs to be clearly identified and it needs to be somewhat fixed, not changing year to year, unless we, we consciously change that number, but not just because, well, this year there's only twenty-five kids in this, in the classroom at this building, so we're gonna use twenty-five there. It, it needs to be a standard. And, and the other thing is the, well, this could get a little tricky when we're talking about K one, two, three, four, five, so some years we might have more classrooms, some more K one classrooms and fewer K three, or through, two, three classrooms and then the next year it could change. But I, I believe we need to fix a capacity for that building and it should stay at that capacity until we make a procedural change, not just because, well, this year we needed another special ed classroom at, at Livingston, so we're gonna change that classroom from a general ed classroom to a special ed classroom and reduce the capacity of that building when it, when in fact, the building didn't change, unless we go in and physically make the changes to change it from a general ed to a special ed classroom. But to me, I would like to see a capacity that is based on something logical and it doesn't change from year to year.
I agree with that and recognizing that we should try not to move programs, but that's a clear way where they would change capacity, right? If we move two special ed programs from Chihuahua to Pasco so that we can have these gen ed classes at Chihuahua, that could dramatically increase your capacity because more kids can fit in those classrooms, but then that also recognizes that you're moving a special ed program, which maybe, probably is not a good idea. And the same thing, like you mentioned, at the elementary level, if one year there's, needs to be an extra kinder first grade class just based on the demographics of that school boundary, well, then that's gonna change your capacity a little bit.
Well, it, it'll change our utilization, but it won't change the capacity. To me, that's what's frustrating is we, we start bouncing these numbers around and that, that, I don't like that personally. We can utilize it, I mean, we can put, if we have a six hundred student building and we choose to put three hundred students in there because of the program, great. We're using a six hundred, six hundred student capacity building to serve three hundred students, but we can explain why. But just to arbitrarily change it because we changed it from.
A kinder, fifth grade to kinder class.
Right. To me, that, that's troublesome.
Yeah, so there should be maybe like a standard, this number of kinder, this number of first grade. And if it changes year to year, fine, but, but let's just establish, this is the standard at ninety percent of schools that you would have this many classrooms.
Yeah. Yep.
So would option B or D perhaps get us closer to?
So for simplicity, option D is easy. We just say for every, so in our, every elementary classroom has a capacity of X. In the, in this case of Angelo, option D, it's twenty. And we have this many general ed classrooms, whether we choose to use them as K one classrooms or two, three, or four, six classrooms, here's the number. We're not, you know, we're not bouncing it up and down based on whether we've got K one or two, three or four, six in there. I, personally, I, I like that.
How did, I guess I like that if that capacity number of twenty, which is what's being used, is a weighted average of the class size reduction. So we have K through three and we have seven grades, that should be four sevenths times seventeen students, et cetera. Is that how we came up with twenty there?
For, for this specific school, twenty was calculated by using the, there's K through three, we have fifteen classrooms at seventeen, with seventeen being the, the number of students and grades.
So I.
Oh, wait.
I, I think if we're gonna do it.
And grades four through six, twenty-five.
Sorry to interrupt. I think if we, if we're gonna do it and we're gonna come up with some number, it should be a weighted average based on their seven grade levels. And if we're doing what Mr. Christensen says, four sevenths of that calculation, is it seventeen per classroom? And then you look at this and you say, four through six is twenty-five, it should be three sevenths times twenty-five, add them together and if that number comes out to twenty, is Mr. Nunnamaker doing the math there? Whatever it is, that's the number we should use.
I'd be curious if it does or not.
I agree. I, I'm not so concerned about what that number is, but what would concern me as well is for Angelo, it's this, for Livingston, it's this, for McGee, it's this. No, it's one number across the district, every building, here's the number. And the number of general ed classrooms vary, the number of classrooms would vary from building to building, but, but we would expect that the grade distribution across our district is somewhat uniform. So if we have, like Mr. Lerman says, we have seven grades, K two, or no, K, I guess K one would be two sevenths of that. And if that is seventeen, you know, whatever you wanna weight that, I guess it's K three. So four sevenths at seventeen and three sevenths at twenty-five, whatever that weights out to be. And I don't think we need to go twenty point six students, it's twenty or twenty-one.
It's approximately what?
Twenty point four. But we'd have a basis for it instead of, I don't know where twenty came from here. It looks like it might vary by school.
But are you going to give a high poverty school a multiplier like that and then a, and then a, you know, non-poverty school multiplier?
If you're asking me, I wouldn't do that. I would say one, and not because we wouldn't make those smaller, but that building is designed to serve this number of students. Now, because it's a high poverty building, we have, we're, we're not utilizing it to its fullest capacity because, I don't know if it's by law or just by choice, that we, we've chosen not to do that.
But at the same time, we can fit forty kids in a classroom and it might be designed for forty kids because it's an older school with bigger classrooms, but it's not being utilized that, that way. So we are putting in numbers that we are utilizing it. So where do you draw that line when, if we're gonna follow these class sized reductions, there's a very clear line there that says this school will hold this capacity because it's high poverty and this one will hold this capacity because it's not.
I agree with Mr. Christensen on this that, you know, cause the poverty, that could change, right? I mean, so we're looking at, we're talking about two things, capacity and utilization. And so I'm of the mindset as well that we just identify this school is this size, this is our number and it should be the same at all schools and that's the capacity. And I, like what you said, if, if we're gonna utilize it a certain degree to meet these standards, that's fine. Recognizing that a school that's a poverty school may not always be a poverty school and one that isn't right now could become. So in, in looking at these, I would say option C or D without the portables would be what I would, what I would be in favor of for all of these. Option E, just people at home is, is essentially the same, but it's only counting a class size reduction number for K three. And I think we need to get there with all of our grades because we have a need at all of our grades for that. So I would be in favor of option C or D without counting the portables though for all levels.
I guess at the secondary, I, I already said it, but to reiterate, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of going with the lower class size reduction numbers if at this point it's put off. I guess when the legislature or the state changes that requirement, I could see us going to that and changing how we calculate, but at this point, and, and the reason I said not option A, but the option way to the left, Mr. Christensen, is because I do agree with you that it shouldn't change every year based on current utilization. And so that's why I guess I didn't like options A or B at the secondary level. And I said I like the option that doesn't have a letter on the far left because it doesn't take into account current utilization, it takes contract capacity and a scheduling factor with no class size reduction at the secondary level.
And I, I agree. I believe that when the state comes in and says, okay, we're reducing class sizes, boom, all of ours, all of our building's capacities are gonna change at that moment. So I really feel that we need to utilize the current, you know, the, the current class sizes per building for what the laws are currently. And I do think we're going to have to change capacity of buildings anytime the state changes the laws according, or, or if we're gonna use contract language, anytime the contract language changes, we're going to have to change the capacity of the buildings. That just, I know, that to me makes sense by putting in the, you know, now, now if we're using this for an upcoming bond in four years and the state is supposed to change to these smaller things, we absolutely have to consider that for the bond. But for tom, next year's growth and where we're putting kids and everything else, we've got to consider, we, we've gotta know what the current laws are, what our current contract language is and what we're currently doing. Does it have to, I mean, I don't, I don't like the current utilization either. That's not, I don't think that's a great way to put in what the class size is. What I do think is a great way is the class reduc, size reductions that we are currently using and are currently law, we need to use those. We need to use a scheduling factor and we need to use, you know, the con, but whatever we, you know, the contractor lan, language that we have to abide by, that needs to be our class size. Laws and contracts for a language and, and scheduling factor.
Yeah, if we, if we were to use options C and D at the secondary level, it could artificially skew where our need is. Yes, it's nice to have middle school and elem, or middle school and high school classes down at the, at the class size reduction, but it's not required at this point.
I think a, a discussion we need to have is, so are we doing things just because someone passes a law saying that we have to do it? I don't wanna make decisions based on that. I have very little faith in our legislature and I, I don't wanna base common sense or what we're gonna decide to do and present based on what law is being passed. As we've seen, that is a tenuous foundation. So what, Mr. Christensen, I don't wanna put words into his mouth, but what he and I are saying is, we just need to establish what we feel is an adequate, appropriate number for capacity and that should not change, because what we're talking about now is class size contractual class, that can change, sure. Utilization can change, sure. We could put forty kids in a classroom, but is that really ideal? I mean, that, that.
But, but, sorry to interrupt, the number's thirty here. So we're talking thirty versus reducing it to twenty-five just because there's a class size reduction that's not enforced. Do we think twenty-five's better than thirty? And I'm just saying, I don't think it is.
Okay. So no, I, I'm not in favor of changing it because of there's a law. That's what I'm saying, that, that I don't care what the law says. What I care about is the performance of our students and the education they're receiving. And I don't need any law to say, you must reduce to twenty-five students by this day for us to say, okay, at, at these grade levels, we've identified that this is more ideal. This is the ideal learning environment, this is what the capacity of a school should be to properly educate our students. And just because in our, our bargaining in the last year, we said that you could have twenty-eight kids in this elementary school classroom or thirty kids in this high school classroom and next year we decide it's thirty-two, that, that is a different discussion than what we're identifying the building as the capacity of this building. Cause see that, now we're talking about different things. And if we can keep that clear, I think that's just more understandable and clear to people that look at this and wanna know, okay, what is the capacity of your building? We can say, this is a standard, this is the building size, this is what an appropriate, cause, cause to me, that's what this is trying to say. What is an appropriate number of students in Livingston that's built to this size of the building? And that's what, to me, this is getting at. And that's why I'm saying, there's, this should be a standard across the whole state. I mean, this should just be a, we've accepted that this is the capacity. And then as, as a district, if you wanna utilize it differently, if you're gonna overutilize, if you're gonna use portables, if you wanna get it even lower than that, that's fine. And, and we don't have to hold this, this is just a number, this doesn't determine what we're gonna do. It's just more clear that this is the capacity of those buildings.
But going back to it, why would we say twenty-five secondary students per class is better than thirty? I'm saying if we go with options C and D, then in effect, we're saying that we're letting the legislature tell us that we should have twenty-five even though it's not enforceable and it's on hold right now. So thirty's.
So can I just throw?
I'm not saying that that's the right number, right? We can do option F that has twenty-six, or I'm just saying, we need to decide what the appropriate number is. Again, I don't, I'm not saying that twenty-three is the number. Maybe it's option F where we say, well, no, I think twenty-five is a reasonable thing and that's probably what we all agree on is appropriate.
So I'd like to just throw out a little bit of context for the seventeen and twenty-five. Those numbers, yes, they're in some legislation that was passed, but they came from a study by the QEC, which is the Quality Education Council, did a, a study and those were, that's where those numbers came from. So there was a comprehensive study done that identified those numbers as what, what we might refer to as a standard of service at those grade levels. So that's where those numbers came from.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I would just, I would be in favor of the twenty-five and seventeen, which would be a, a different option where we would change the capacity, kinda like Mr. Christensen said, that we use the numbers of the non-poverty schools range and we say, that's the capacity. Now, for this reason, your poverty school, it's less or this, you know, which could change.
But I, I think if you look at these, all we're, all we're talking about, the difference or where, where we're not in agreement is the number that's used. I think the approach, is the approach okay if we take, we've got this number of classrooms, we take it by this number of students per classroom, whatever that is, we multiply that by some scheduling factor and that becomes our capacity. And then we'll, I would expect the only number, so if we go in and make a physical change to the building, add a classroom, change a configure of a, configuration of a classroom from general ed to special ed, then it would, we would see the number of classrooms change. The number of students per classroom, I would expect, we, that is a single number that we use, well, I say a single number, a single number for the elementary, a single. use, well, I say a single number, a single number for the elementary, a single number for the high school, a single number for the middle school. And that number, if there is a change, then Dr. Reyes, Mrs. Whitney would come back and say, we wanna change this number in our calculating school capacity, and here's why. Whether it's based on legislation, or contract language, or something else. Does that make sense?
I, I think the only difference is, so looking at these secondary levels, all the, all the general ed classrooms are the, are the same. Nine twelve at the high school level, seven eight at the middle school level. There, there's no distinction between seventh grade class size and eighth grade class size. It's a single number. The challenge is when you get down into the elementary. And, and what I was referring to when I said option D is it, it uses a single number for kindergarten through, now, currently, sixth grade. And I think, Scott, what you were saying is that number needs to be weighted, and I would agree, that we don't wanna just pick an arbitrary number. And whatever that number is, it needs to have a basis. But I would prefer to use a single number rather than trying to, is this classroom a K one classroom, a second, third classroom, so?
Yes, and I'm just throwing some food for thought out there. It would be nice, and I don't know that we could agree to it today or come to the agreement in the words, but that we set something as a board that said, the class sized basis will be based on the lesser of the contract requirement, or, or enforceable legislation, or whatever we wanna say. Because right now, with one, we're going with enforceable legislation at the elementary school level, and the majority of the board sounds like we're talking about, for the secondary level, picking a number that's recommended possible legislation in the future. It's less than the contract language, it's not enforceable legislation, it's a number. So how-
So I think with, when it comes to legislation, at least currently, I mean, that's, and I, I think what Dr. Richardson is saying, and I would agree, we don't need the legislators to tell us what the right classroom size is for our community. We can determine that. Now, what the legislature could do is say, well, if you don't meet this target, we're gonna penalize you. And then at that point, we've gotta make a decision. Are we gonna be, are we gonna accept the penalty? Is the penalty worse than, than trying to meet it? Trying to meet their, their targets? So, currently-
Or hypothesizing, they could say, we're gonna incentivize you and give you more money to reduce it in future time.
But I think we can make the decision, our staff can make the decision, what's the right size for these classrooms, and we use that number, whether it's contractual, or, or legislation, or whatever the basis is for it. But, I would like us to see it, coming out of here, is basically, there's those three factors. We've got the number of classes, the number of classrooms, we've got a utilization, that's not the right word, scheduling factor, and then we've got students per each type of classroom. And I, personally, I would like to see each of those proceduralized, and that number of students per classroom changes only with procedure changes, and, and there would be some basis for that. And it's applied across the district, whether you're Pasco or Chihuahua High, whether you're one of the three middle schools, or whether you're one of the fifteen elementary schools, you're all using the same number.
Yeah, I just wanna reiterate, 'cause I, maybe I'm just not explaining myself, where I, I don't care about the contract or the laws regarding this, that to me, this is meaning, you know, what are you identifying as the capacity? I appreciate Ms. Whitney saying that this is evidence-based, current research says this is the, the appropriate, ideal, perfect world number for a kindergarten classroom, for a middle school classroom. And that's what we use to say, this is the capacity of this building. The laws and the contract, that's gonna change constantly. We want, for this, and this isn't gonna determine, we can do whatever we want, but for this, we're this, we're gonna use this word, capacity, it should be based on current evidence, research, what is the appropriate classroom size, whether or not that's Washington state law or not, whether or not that's in our current bargaining agreement or not. What are we gonna identify based on evidence and research as the appropriate size for, for these classrooms and buildings? And I'm fine with the weighting it, how you've described, and, but that way, it's just consistent all across the buildings. And then we can determine utilization and programs however we want, but the capacity then becomes easy to explain and apart from all of those other factors.
I, I am fine with weighting it. I think weighting it's a great idea, just putting a, you know, I don't know, twenty-two point one, whatever. But if we're gonna really do this, then we have to have a whole nother conversation on what the ideal class size is. There was one company somewhere that said thirty. I have done so much research on student achievement in the size of classroom. I taught a math class of forty students when I was doing my student teaching. They don't even do that here in the state of Washington, but those kids had phenomenal test scores. So who's gonna say that thirty is better than twenty-five? To me, what we're using, what the current contract language and what the law is required is what we're putting in our classroom, and that's the capacity of our building. Putting in all these ideals, and we're not even using our schools in any way, shape, or form like those ideals, I think is crazy. If you really wanna know the truth, I think at twelve or ten kids per classroom, you can actually see a marked improvement in student achievement. Well, it's not possible, but we could do that in all of our schools, because this is the lofty goal that would really help our kids, because it really would. But right now, there's thirty kids in our classrooms, because that's what the law requires, that's what our contract requires, and that's what I believe we need to say the capacity of our building is.
Okay. So are we, Dr. Reyes, any, any comment?
So, what I'm understanding is that we would like to have a standard formula to calculate capacity across our schools at each grade band, looking at secondary together, seven, twelve. So, we would use the number of classrooms times the number of students based on whatever the collective bargaining agreement or class sized reduction, times a scheduling factor. And that's, that's what we would use as capacity for any one of our schools.
Does, does that sound okay? I mean, I think, I would agree with Mrs. Phillips, we need, at some point, we'll have a discussion on what is the right number, and I think that's gonna be based on the recommendation of staff, and I don't-
So, so the staff is recommending utilizing the non-poverty schools based on QEC? And I think, yes, we can have that conversation, but that decision is directly connected to the capital facilities plan that's on a timeline.
Okay.
So, we were hoping to try to get to some kind of consensus around that tonight, so that Sarah and our, our consultant, Mrs. Stiparm, had some direction. Am I, yeah?
Okay, so, is-
So, just to be clear, our recommendation was to use the class sized reduction, whether it's the non-poverty or high poverty, I think we would be fine with the non-poverty. And our foundation for that recommendation is that the QEC clearly identified that as the standard of service. So that's our current recommendation. Yeah, and it was our standard of service that was identified in the last capital facilities plan.
And we could, we could calculate a weighted average as opposed to a class sized average.
But, but that's fine. I think that's, again, you're the experts, the education experts, and you say, this is what the research shows. Now, if we wanna, as a board, discuss this in the future and try to come up with other research, or invite people to present other guidelines or research, or, Ms. Phillips, if you have, you know, other research that you wanna share with district administration or with the board to reanalyze that, I think that's fine. But currently, this is what the Quality Education Council is recommending based on their research, and I'm sure they've looked at plenty of things, but, but that's fine. I'm happy to have another discussion on that in the future, but for now, this is what's being recommended, and so we should use those numbers.
Why are we using these numbers one way and not using them in, we're using them for theory, but I'm just really struggling with, okay, we're making these capacities as a pie in the sky, and yet this is how we're really using our schools, and this is the real capacity. How, how useful is it if Chihuahua has a capacity of twenty-one hundred up here, but really, there's twenty-eight hundred, and there's no way, even with the portables, they're all even in the school, so, you know, the kids are having class in the parking lot? I mean, how, how do we justify this?
It just recognizes that this is the situation. I mean, I think it's super helpful, actually. I think it's extremely helpful to explain, like, yes, this is the capacity of this school based on the best national recommendations right now, based on our district administration, based on the Quality Education Council. This is, you know, Chihuahua should have between eighteen hundred and nineteen hundred students. And it just recognizes that it's extremely overcrowded, and that we need another high school. I mean, it, it's very, it's great, I think, because it just, we just have to recognize that that's the situation we're in. It reinforces everyone's feeling that all of our schools are, essentially, not all of our schools, but nearly all of our schools are overcrowded, and it just backs that up. And of course, we're not there yet, but it reinforces that need we have for additional facilities.
So maybe we say the capacity of Chihuahua is eighteen thirty-eight. However, currently, we have twenty-seven hundred students enrolled. Call it capacity and enrollment.
Yeah, but Chihuahua was built for twenty-two hundred, so how do we explain to the area that they just, we paid for this very expensive, fairly new school at twenty-two hundred, and the capacity has now shrunk by four hundred students?
Well, I think-
The legislation.
I, I think the challenge is this, so where, who said it was twenty-two hundred?
Yeah, that's, I don't, who says that it's built for twenty-
I've heard that again and again.
I, I agree.
But there's no-
But, but what's the basis?
And, and when, well, it's probably on the bond.
Well, they may have said that, but what's the basis for it?
Yeah.
I, I think that's the question. And we're trying to establish what we're going to use for a basis going forward. This is going to be the number that we use for capacity.
So are we gonna make this contractual language, then?
Well, I, this is not part of a contract. This is just, we're establishing that this is the standard. And again, yeah, there's no, nothing that says that Chihuahua was built for twenty, and if it was, that was their best guess ten years ago, and-
So, I, I have a question, and it's hypothetical, but not really. Let's say we go with option D on, on Chihuahua. And, and the basis for this question is, are we artificially skewing where our real need is by going with class sized reduction at the secondary level? So, let's say we went with option D on secondary level, and it says, Chihuahua's new capacity is eighteen hundred and thirty-eight students.
Okay, so, so before you go any further, if we take a look at this number right here, class sized reduction, non-poverty, it says nine twelve is twenty-five.
So, just for clarification, both Chihuahua and Ochoa were designed based on the high poverty, because currently, they qualify for that. So that's why the number's twenty-three. But I, so I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to be-
Thank you.
That's okay. And before you get further in your scenario, again, who says that we're using this to determine need? This is just one thing that we're doing to identify capacity. And when we identify need, we look at a whole skew of other things. You know, this is, this is not the only thing to identify need. I wouldn't just say, well, it's this much undercapacity, the enrollment's this, the capacity's this, that's the biggest need. No way. We gotta look at, 'cause as we discussed with, in previous bond discussions, the need, even though on paper, may seem more at the elementary level or at the middle school level, and the middle school level need was not there, if you look at the experience, you can't just always look right at the numbers. And then with bonds, the even bigger question is, well, what will your community support? And so, again, this is, I think the premise is false right off the bat.
But, so, let's say that all of our, our elementary schools were at twenty-two students in kinder through third grade. So they're five students over, our, our class sized reduction requirement is seventeen. So we'd say, okay, what percent is that? Twenty-five percent, or whatever the number is. Now we go, and I won't say artificially, but we, we set our capacity at the high school at twenty-three. And at the high school, we have twenty-nine students per class. Now it looks like our capacity at the high school is like thirty-five percent over, but we're still under thirty, which I would think is okay. But we go, oh, there is a much more need at the high school, because we set this at twenty-three students, even though thirty's our contract, thirty, we're not required to do better than thirty. We are required to do better than seventeen, or we are required to do better than twenty-three at the elementary school, but we go, but we're gonna ignore that law, because it looks like our need is much greater at the high school. So we're gonna ignore the law that says we need seventeen at the elementary school, even though we're at twenty-three, and we're gonna go, but we're thirty, we're forty percent over at the high school, even though we're not over anything, any law or any contract basis.
Right, no, I totally hear what you're saying.
So excuse that. That's my point.
So don't do that, and that's the point.
Right, I guess the piece, I just wanna interject really quickly, is if you remember when we did kind of the over enrollment, under enrollment calculations with MGT, we had the flexibility to set cut points that identified what over and under enrollment would be. So I think you could control for what you're explaining by how we set our cut points to identify what over and enrollment and under enrollment is.
But it's hard to market that to a-
I just was offering it as a-
I know, I know. To a community group when we go and say, our high school is forty percent over capacity?
No, we don't do that. That's the point.
That's what I was suggesting, is that perhaps you control for that kind of messaging in the way that you set your cut points in facilities analysis, would be one, one path through that.
Ms. Lerman, this is the thing, that you, we wouldn't do that, or I would never do that. That, that's the point. We're, we're trying to make this more than it is. You know, we're, you brought up, again, the, the reduction requirement and our contractual requirements. No, that, there's no discussion. This is a separate thing. We're just talking about capacity. We don't have to use this for any of those, this is just-
It will be, though.
Well, no, we're talking right now about it, so let's not. We're saying, 'cause the, the premise, these, these hypothetical situations you're bringing up, bring up the perfect point, don't do that. We, we should not do that. Because again, this is only identifying this number for capacity and facilities, and we don't have to use it as a messaging tactic when we are talking about class sized, contractual class sized, and legal class sized. Don't use it for that. It's not intended for that. This is, we're just identifying building capacity, and it's one of many measures that affect those decisions.
But you don't think publishing that Chihuahua's new capacity is eighteen hundred?
Don't, don't call it a new capacity.
And saying that we have twenty-five hundred students, there isn't gonna be the driving force that most people-
Absolutely not.
-pick up on?
And what if it is?
We explain it. We say, this is what, you know, and we don't, we shouldn't do that. And we don't need to, we're not gonna publish it and say, this is the new capacity, because nothing's changed.
So I, I, I think the thing that we need to, I think the thing we need to agree on tonight, I mean, I think, with the exception of the number of classrooms in the building, do we have the right, what are we calling that, scheduling factor? I mean, some people could look at that and go, we're only using our classrooms seventy-five percent of the time, maybe we need to look at that. The number of students per classroom, maybe we need to look at that. But I think for now, if we just use these numbers, the non-poverty schools, we have a basis for these numbers. If we feel like we need to adjust that at some future point, based on the, the way we're actually utilizing it, or, or some other evidence, then we can revisit that number and use a, a new number. But I think for now, for what we're trying to do, this gives us a good, solid basis for setting a capacity of a school. I'm sure there'll be some, because I, I would like this number to be very clear, very public, this is the capacity of our schools. It, man, I don't think there's anybody that thinks that we're under capacity in any of our buildings, and this will help us see that. So I'm in favor of just using these numbers, like we've talked about, we'll wait the elementary, use a single number for all the elementary classrooms. I think, Scott, your idea of weighting it is a great way to do it.
I agree.
But we can have a discussion at some point if we need to, to, to consider whether these are the right numbers to be using. But I, I think these numbers plugged into, well, use any of them on the, on the high school, and then in option D on the elementary school, is what works best for me.
I, I agree with Ms. Phillips and Mr. Lerman in the, kind of looking at that scheduling factor, maybe the seventy-five is too low, and so I don't know if we have, if we're able to do that now, but maybe we should pick eighty, or, you know, something that's more of a, the common, you know, I, I don't know what that other districts have, but that would change it a, a good amount. It would be closer to two thousand, nineteen fifty, so maybe we do need to look at that.
I think we need to use, to me, I, I'm guessing that scheduling factor is what is currently part of our bargaining, and so I think that we need to stick with that. And I'm guessing it's lunch and one prep hour, which is very typical of schools, and this school has seventy percent, so-
So maybe that is, maybe that is the right number.
So I'm not sure seventy-five is, but I do, I did do the math on Chihuahua High School, and just adding two kids to every classroom puts it at a hundred and ninety-eight, and not the, not the special ed. I left the special ed at ten. Anyway, and it puts it at a hundred and ninety-eight kids bigger. In addition, and so, and I do think the capacity of Chihuahua is probably closer, I don't think it's eighteen hundred. And I don't think having twenty-three kids-
And I don't think having 23 kids per class in high school is really, well, personally, I think 30 per class in high school's a really good number, but I'm okay with the 25, especially if we're going to go there. And I absolutely believe we have to take in legislative, legislation and what we're doing at the school, instead of some grandiose pie in the sky. We've got to do what we're doing. We have to reflect what we're using this goal. I mean, yes, we all want to get rid of the portables, that's a goal, but we have to reflect. But if we're going to have to go there, I'm okay with using those numbers because it is legislation.
So do you have enough information from us?
Sorry.
Option D.
Well, option D, well, yeah, I guess option D on all of them, and just use these numbers, the non-poverty schools.
And a weighted average.
Yeah, at the elementary level, weight that based on the grade configuration. It comes out 20.4. I'm hesitant to use decimals in a number calculation, but-
We would ask to use 20 if that's okay, or 21.
Well, it rounds to 20.
What is the number, though?
20.4.
I think we need to use 20.4.
Well, I would do 20.
Auburn used decimals.
I absolutely think we should use, if we're going to weight it, like we said we were going to weight it, we need to use 20.4. Otherwise, we use 25 per grades four through six, and we use 17K through three. We get 20.4 times 800 or whatever the capacity is, is going to make a difference. So we either leave it, or we leave it with these separate numbers, or we use 20.4.
We're happy to use 20.4.
Let's use 20.4, but the final number, let's not make it 562.7 students.
Amen. Amen.
For poverty, I got 18.3. Does that, is that reasonable for poverty schools? Instead of 20.4, it'd be 18.3?
Our recommendation at this point would be to use non-poverty across the board.
Non-poverty across the board.
And not mess with the high poverty at this point.
Well, the one thing that we do need then, and I honestly believe that, what's our group, MGT group, that I really believe that they're going to need two numbers for every school. Because if we're deciding whether or not we need to build new schools, and we have X amount of poverty schools, and they have to be at this size, then we need, okay, this is the number, the capacity number, but right now, they have to be under poverty. So we, this is the capacity right now because it's a poverty school. Somehow, we have to take that into account. So, which is fine. I think that all schools are going to be used capacity differently, but in order to build more schools, we have to take into account, if we need another school, because this is all poverty, and we're not going to fit unless we put 60 portables out there, you know? We've got to figure that in, so we're going to have to have two capacities. I mean, I think we should have one general for most everything, but if we're building a new school, we need a new school because this whole area's capac-
I mean, I would use a different number, a different word than capacity, because then that gets confusing. So we, this is the capacity, but we're going to use other words to describe what we're talking about.
Oh, great.
Utilization and things like that.
Say the utilization is 300 children less because it's a high poverty school. Perfect.
Yeah, it wouldn't be that high, but yes.
Okay. Thank you. I think we've made some progress.
I think that this is room for celebration. We have asked for consistency in capacity, and we're just one step closer to getting it.
We are.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Reyes.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Whitney.
I'm sorry, we're such a difficult group to work with, and I appreciate your patience.
It's robust dialogue to get to a good decision. It's not difficult. Yeah.
I think that's great. So Sarah, you have-
We've got 15 minutes. We've got 15 minutes. We're going to do-
Well, you've got 45, but we'd appreciate it if you only take 15.
Yes, yes. I think we can, I think we can do that. I think that what I'd like to spend the majority of the rest of the time is giving Denise an opportunity to talk with you about the required components of the capital facilities plan. And I can talk more about the purpose and background of the capital facilities plan with you the next time we have a study session. What's important to relate to the conversation that you just had around the calculation of capacity is that this decision and how we define capacity and our standard of services as a district directly relates to what we put into our capital facilities plan calculations, and that's why it's very important from a timeline standpoint for us to get this direction from you tonight. And so when we, when they bring back the recommendations based on the input that you just gave, we're also going to be factoring that into the calculations of the capital facilities plan. So we are due to update the plan this year. We will have a study session at the end of April where we can dive into it in more depth. But some things that we need you to be thinking about, you just talked about the capacity numbers. Denise will talk with you in more detail about what the components of the plan are and the formula. And then there's some information in your packet about enrollments that also becomes an important factor. So I will turn it over to you.
Well, thank you for having me here tonight, and I will make this quick because we will have a deeper dive, as Sarah mentioned, at the end of April. And so the required components that we'll walk through tonight are going to be mostly theoretical, because we don't have the data that we will in a month to be able to show you how they operate. But it's good background to get you all thinking about what you're going to see. And so this is all set forth in state law in terms of what you need to show in your capital facilities plan to establish a basis for impact fees. And so as you are putting together the capital facilities plan, what drives your need is the conversation you just had, the standard of service. And so how your buildings are used and what you have available to serve a new student that walks in the door from new development. So we identify that standard of service and use that then to, as we talk about your existing capacity and facilities and what those numbers mean. We then look at the enrollment projections over the six-year planning period, so we'll look through 2023 to see what's going on in your district, K-12, and then broken down K-6, 7, 8, and 9, 12. And what the information in your package shows is that growth is leveling out a bit, but there are some continued enrollment growth areas that will provide a basis for showing that you do need to continue to charge school impact fees. And so that's really what that facility needs, is we're looking at your existing capacity, we're comparing that with your projected growth to determine, do you have a new capacity need? And so by virtue of your bond measure, we know that you have projects planned at your elementary and your middle school level, and the new capacity need will be analyzed within those, within those projects, because we'll want to see, are the enrollment capacity numbers and the projected growth demonstrating a new capacity need at those growth, at those grade levels where there are actually planned projects? So when we put the finance plan together, we look at that. We look at, what are your capacity-related projects? Then we do an impact fee calculation, and this is based upon the state law parameters. You need to show basically that you've established a need, and then from there, the fee calculation is intended to provide the fee payer with the amount that represents a proportionate share. So basically, per dwelling unit, what does it cost to provide new capacity to a new home? And, let's see if I can figure this out. Ah, thank you. Okay. So again, the formula that's defined by state law is also adopted as a part of your city ordinance. We use those facility costs to determine what the per dwelling unit fee will be. And so I'm going to just flip, as, we'll come back to this as needed, but I'm going to flip to the formula, just because it's a little bit helpful to kind of see how this breaks down, and I say see, but I know it's really small. This is based upon the 2016 capital facilities plan, and at that time, the district was planning new capacity at the elementary and the high school levels. So you'll see that we identified the total facility cost for those projects at those levels, and then calculated, based upon the planned capacity of those buildings, what it costs per student, essentially. Then that per student cost is multiplied by what's called the student generation rate, and this is drawn from the last six years of new development permits within the district to determine, on average, how many students at each grade level are coming out of new homes. So you'll see that for elementary, for example, you had 0.310 students coming out of a new single-family home. That's used as a multiplier to tell us what the per dwelling unit impact is. So we get down to that per dwelling unit impact, but we're not done, because under state law, we also need to account for other dollars. Impact fees can't be used to pay total costs. You have to consider what other funding will you have for that new capacity. So we have a credit provided for dollars from the State School Construction Funding Assistance Program. So any dollars that you're going to receive for that project, we get that per dwelling unit credit. Then second, the largest one frankly, is from a bond measure. So what is it going to cost that new homeowner, when they move into the home, on an average over the next 10 years? What are they going to be paying in taxes? We do that so there's not a double count, they're not going to pay twice. So you apply those two credits to get to what is called the unfunded need. And then that is then reduced by 25%, which is essentially a third credit. But this district, in the past six years of reviewing and adopting school impact fees, has applied an additional credit to get down to what your fee has been for the last four years, which is 4,700, and that's for the single-family fee. Now again, this is the 2016 fee. It's going to look different for purposes of what we'll talk about at the end of April, but this kind of gives you the context of everything that we're going to be pulling together and then presenting to you for purposes of making that decision for your 2018 capital facilities plan and school impact fees. So I'm just going to pause if there are any questions on that.
Do you have a question? I appreciate you going through the, so my big beef with this is the 25% reduction, the calculated single-family fee amount reduction, whatever you want to call that. And I'd like to see prior to our April discussion, other districts across our state, is that a standard, something that all districts do, or are we just making that? Because that's, we do all of these intense calculations, and then we just have this arbitrary 40 to 50% reduction at the end. So it's just so silly to me that we have all these, like, to the end decimal calculation, and then we just take off 40%. So it just is so silly to me that doing all of these details and then just essentially making up a number based on some arbitrary reduction. So I'd like to see more data around that.
Yeah, we can definitely provide that, and I can just tell you really quick, because I work with many of the school districts who do have school impact fee programs, and the majority of them, and this is often set by the ordinance of the local jurisdiction, the majority of them actually discount by 55, 0%. And the reason for that is, King County was the first jurisdiction in the state to adopt a school impact fee ordinance back in 1992. They, in developing that ordinance, which has been widely replicated, it's a very defensible formula, working with stakeholders, reached a compromise. That's really all it was, to reduce the fee by 50%, calling it a local share. I do think that some discount is appropriate because you're using averages throughout the formula, you're using average student generation rate, average assessed value. But the 50% is the steepest discount typically that is used, and it's just been adopted by many jurisdictions. Your city, I believe, has adopted the 25% as a part of the ordinance, so that's where that 25% comes in. Additional reductions on top of that are discretionary. So, and I can, I'll provide a more detailed sheet showing you kind of the fallout across the state in terms of different levels of discount.
That's very helpful. Thank you for that information.
Sarah, is there anything else you wanted me to touch on?
No, that was really if the number of details in the formula, so much better than you would then.
I guess I have one other question, and I apologize. Just for, so currently, as it's set up, we only collect impact fees from the city but not the county, is that correct? But even the part of the county that's part of the school district? So I'd also like to see that as part of kind of this, is that a standard thing? Is, you know, that's always confused me as well.
Certainly, we can touch on that.
You're part of our school district, but it's just this arbitrary that you don't contribute? I don't know.
What I can tell you generally is, under the Growth Management Act, school districts are not authorized to collect fees. They have to rely upon their jurisdiction, so your city and your counties. And so it is up to that jurisdiction whether or not they, as a policy matter, want to have an impact fee ordinance for schools. I would say that for the most part, if we're looking at Western Washington up and down I-5, by this time, most cities and counties have all adopted school impact fee ordinances in some way. There were a few that, like your county, have school mitigation secured through the SEPA process, which is what I've been working with Sarah and Randy on over the past year. But it is a not-as-predictable process and lacks the flexibility frankly of the GMA school impact fees.
Okay, thank you. So have you got all the information you need from us, Sarah?
We do. Just the last piece of information that I want to bring to your attention is in your packet, and we don't need to go over it in detail, but it's the enrollment forecast, just so that you can have an awareness that the projected enrollments are leveling off, that we've looked at several different sources for enrollment projections. And the one that we have the most confidence in is the enrollment forecast generated by MGT this past year, because we do feel that it best reflects what our past experience has been, as well as what we're actually seeing in our frequent contacts with the county and city around, around building permits, that we're seeing those going up. So this is the growth forecast that we are going to be using to, for the formula, but just so that you're aware that we are not anticipating a percentage level of growth in like the 5, 6, 7% range that we've seen over the past 10 years. We're looking more at about like 1 and 1/2, 2% a year, which is still a good chunk of kids. When you apply that small percentage to a larger number, you know, it still generates quite a few, quite a few kids, but as a percentage, that's coming in a little lower. So just wanted you to be aware of that. We will come back at the end of April with, in a study session around the, around the capital facilities plan with that detail, though, and get you that material ahead of time so that we can talk to you about any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments?
I do, if we could look at, I don't think those are including, I recently read, potential 5,000 to 8,000 home development in West Pasco, and so that would dramatically alter these projections, I would imagine. So I'm wondering how we're going to incorporate that into our facilities plan.
So Denise mentioned that we're looking at a six-year timeframe for this particular plan. I don't think that planned development, Dr. Richardson, fits within the timeline that we would be looking at. I think that would be accounted for probably in the long-term facilities plan that Dr. Reyes is working on.
Those people are just going to have pets, not kids. So, wow, what timing. Sarah, we'll have to have you back more often. 6 o'clock, we're done. So I think that concludes our study session. We'll reconvene at 6:30 in our board meeting.